Gino. Slightly leaning to the right, United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. Welcome. Nice to see you. This is our meeting of the year. It's Thursday, March 20. And before we get into the meeting, we have a very special person that we're going to be recognizing and honoring. And many of you know her. I'm sure everybody knows her. One of the most political and popular names in Mahoning Valley for over, I don't know, sixty, seventy years. That's Norlyn Malarima. Our reporter. And would that be said, I'm going to ask Mr. Richard Scarsella, the new county recorder, to come up and introduce Norlyn.
Thanks.
I'm really impressed. We were able to keep a secret. I can't believe it. And Pam sent out an email to everybody. You know, when I came aboard and I found out that Norlyn had been here fifty years and had been the recorder for seventeen before she decided to retire, I thought, well, we recognize people here in the county? And nobody was quite sure. So maybe we're beginning a new tradition. But, you know, she is someone that, very modest, very humble, very hardworking, very professional. And I was very, very happy when she offered to stay aboard for the transition. And I said, you know what? You can stay as long as you want. She'll probably be here longer than Pam or I. And Pam's been here forty-eight years.
Your honor, you next.
I think that's one reason for our success is that we have that continuity. And Norlyn, you know, she embodies that cultural sensitivity, organizational history. She's also very old school. You know, she worked her way up. She earned her title. And even though she's, you know, been at the very top of her game, I have to tell her to sit down because she's always running up to the counter and answering the phone. She outworks the rest of us. So I think it's a good thing to do to celebrate people while they're alive and healthy. And that's why we're doing it today. So let's give her a big round of applause.
Norlyn, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, um, I just want to thank you for this.
Oh, sure.
It's been my pleasure. I love my job. I love all the people I've met through the years. I have a few favorites. But, um, I don't know. I just do my job. I just, it's no big deal. Really, it's not. I love it. But thank you.
It is a big deal. You get fifty years of service.
Well, you know, I was like twelve when I.
Mine is turned sixty-two.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And do you want to say a few words? On behalf of Norlyn.
I've worked for Norlyn for forty-eight years. And we've always got along well. And I like my job and the reporter's office. I'm just thankful for all the things you've done.
Jessie, any men?
Uh, well, thank you for giving me a heads up that you're gonna ask me to scream publicly. Uh, improvisation. What are you gonna do? Um, Norlyn, uh, when I started here in twenty fifteen, uh, my office was right down the hall. So we were right across the hall from the reporter's office for the title, Searchers Work. And she and I have always gone on very well. She was very helpful in telling me how things were organized in her office, as well as just things in general, how things operate in the county, whether good or bad. Um, and I can't thank her enough for all of her, just your friendliness, your guidance, everything. You've been phenomenal. You remain phenomenal to this day. And I appreciate your mentorship and your friendship.
Norlyn, if you'd come up, we'd like to give you a diamond ring. This is kind of big. I don't know if this is gonna fit this through your hand.
Diamond ring?
Figure it out. I thought maybe Joey could give you one.
So we did.
I just wanted to clear something up. Seventy years this was her mom too. So we could keep the fifty and not make us older than that.
Norlyn, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we want to present you with this diamond for your years of service and wisdom and all the good that you've done for this community, helping everybody. You have a great heart, a great family. It's been an honor for me personally to know you and to get to work with you over the last twenty years. I love your family. I wish you all the best. And I'm glad, uh, Richard Scarsella saw fit to keep you in that office because that was something that I wanted to see happen. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And I've known her all those fifty years.
Yeah, for sure. We used to bowl together. I was so terrible, three hundred. And for real, at Northside Bowl.
Back in the day, true.
Yeah, we were, we were something like that, weren't we?
Now, Norlyn, let's just stop right there.
You have to tell me those stories, something.
All right, quick picture.
Thank you, Norlyn. Thank you for being.
Thank you. If you're people, I can't trust any of them anymore. She's thrilling me. She's like, she can't hold on.
And Dan, Ralph, and Dan, would you, would you guys like to say something on behalf of Norlyn?
No, just that she's been delightful from work. But she's a delightful person personally. And her office, my office, worked very well together all these years. And I appreciate her greatly, as we all do.
Yes.
Thank you, Norlyn.
Thank you.
Mr. Yama?
Well, I agree with all of that. It's been great being her neighbor in the courthouse all these years and will continue that way. You know, I just realized when, when you all were saying all this that Norlyn and Pam have worked together longer than most marriages last.
You got that right.
It's been my pleasure. Congratulations, Steve.
Anyone else? I'll leave the floor open. If you want to say something on behalf of Norlyn.
I left something out. Tess, I was negative four years old when she started. There were some groans and some laughs. That's what I was going for.
Very honored, Norlyn.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You may have some more comments at the end, so stick around. All right. Let's see. Where are we? Carol?
Most, most, I forget, approval of previous minutes. I missed public comments. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Can we back up again?
Public comments saved and record. Uh, address for the record, three minutes.
Terrence Sarcos, one two seventy East Grand Street, Lowellville, Ohio. If you're for democracy, we're having a rally this Saturday at two o'clock downtown, uh, across the street from this courthouse to the federal courthouse. Um, it's, we're fighting for democracy. And it's happening through the entire country and also in Ohio. So everyone's welcome if you want to fight for democracy because what's going on in this country is frightening. You have a president that backs up dictators before elected political democratic president to defend his democratic country. And he, and he sides with dictators. We are in bad shape. This is the first time a USA president has sided with a dictator. Keep your eyes open and get involved. And, oh, and tonight is Lynn Morrow. She's, she's going to be speaking at the Seventh Ward Citizens Coalition Meeting. So, uh, at the Oka on Sheridan Road. So any, everyone's welcome to attend.
Thank you, Terrence. You're welcome. Next. Public comment?
Okay. My, for the approval of previous minutes, our meeting will begin Thursday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and approval of.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes, advertising for bids number one. Anna, branch management?
Good morning, Commissioner. Uh, this is a bid for, an advertisement for bids for Pecory Neighborhood Roadway Improvement Phase Four Project. This is part of the Community Development Block.
Thank you.
Motion for the approval of number one advertisement for bids.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes, legal notice number one, jobs and family. Audrey Morales, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Audrey, Nancy, and Jim. Uh, legal notices, number one, job and family service. This is a request for proposals for summer youth employment program. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Carol?
Motion for approval of legal notices, number one.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes, journal entry?
Motion for the approval of the journal.
Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes, three minutes. A through H. We'll begin with our honor.
Okay.
Letter A is the agreement with the State of Ohio for our annual audits for fiscal year twenty twenty-four in the amount of one hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty in general. I'm sorry. This is the, um, the agreement with Jameson, Inc. of our MVPK Act, site, residency, and maintenance in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and is non-general. Thank you.
Okay, Don Wharton?
Oh, yes, sir. Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement with Caliber Graphics for graphic applications on two cargo vans in the amount of four thousand dollars, and it's a non-general fund expenditure.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm also supposed to take facilities?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Okay, item D is agreement with Imperial Glazing Concepts. It's for window replacement. It's Justice Center. It's in the amount of three thousand nine nine thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. It's a general fund expenditure. And moving on to item E, it's an agreement with Trinity Door Systems. It's for replacement of Lobby D doors at Oak Hill Renaissance Building. It's in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And it's also a general fund expenditure.
Thank you. F and G, job and family. Audrey?
Yes. Uh, letter F, this is a, uh, agreement with job and family service, agreement with the sheriff's office for our CSTA four D services for process server in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, nine, one hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-five hundred dollars and seven cents. This reimbursement for eighty-three thousand one hundred ten dollars and fifty-five cents. This is all non-general. Thank you.
Thanks.
And letter G, letter G?
That's, hey, Audrey, second grant?
For job and family service, this is our process agreement, yes. And then the FFP reimbursement, yes. And for G, job and family service, agreement with the Domestic Relations Court for CSTA four D mandated services in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars and three cents. FFP reimbursement, one hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred twelve dollars and eighty-six cents. All non-general.
Thank you. And sanitary. Patter, Jill?
Good morning. Uh, this is an agreement with Air Vac for emergency repairs to the vacuum pump and the vacuum system at our Damascus wastewater treatment plant. It's in the estimated amount of four thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars seventy-six cents, and that's non-general.
Thank you, Jill. Motion?
Motion for the approval of number two agreements, A through H.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey?
Yes, moving on, change orders. Pleasures A, move E, and we'll begin with continuing to prepare, Colleen?
Good morning, Commissioners. Nancy and Audrey. Uh, this is a change order number two for Catholic Charities Regional Agency to provide shelter for people experiencing homelessness during the full weather months of this year, um, in the amount of ten thousand dollars non-general. And I also have Nancy Boydas with me from Catholic Charities.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Audrey. Um, I just want to, on behalf of us, thank you. From December fifteenth through March third, which was our last placement, we had ninety-six families that went through this program. Some maybe one night. Um, our peak was obviously in the very, very cold weather. I can't remember enough. That was January, February, but when it got sub-zero. Um, we had sixteen families that were kind of in, out, in, out. So sixteen families that we felt were really kind of chronic that we have done follow-up with and tried to continue on with. But we really appreciate the, um, funding and, you know, the, it's like a good news, bad news thing. It's great that we have this ability. The sad news is that we used it, uh, some, which is a need for the change. So thank you.
Otherwise, they live in the cold, outside, very, very cold.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for seeing me.
Thank you.
Engineers?
Good morning, everyone. Um, this is change order number three with Maruchin Gaffney Excavating for the Western Reserve Road Widening Project. It's in the amount of fifteen thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars. It's non-general.
Okay, thank you. And then the rest, C, D, E, when?
So, morning, Commissioners. Change order number, uh, C is change order number one and two with disrestoration for chip rehab work at four fifty-six Forest in the amount of two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, item D is change order number one and two with Prime Carpentry LLC for chip rehab work at thirty-eight seventy-two Timber Lane in the amount of two thousand one hundred dollars. And E is change order number one with W and W Construction for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homeswork at thirteen oh one Ivanhoe in the amount of six hundred dollars, all non-general.
I thank you, Phil. Carol?
Motion for the approval of number three change orders, A through E.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yeah.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes. Pointe minutes, Audrey?
Commissioners, this is pursuant to Ohio Advice Code fifty-one forty-nine point three four, appointment of all individuals to serve on the Mahoning County Correction Planning Board effective January first, twenty twenty-five, for a term of two years, um, as listed below. And, um, I know Anna and Carol both have worked on that. CCA.
All right, motion?
Motion for the approval of, um, number four appointments, A.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati? Commissioner Chaffey Canty?
Yes, resolutions?
Motion for the approval of resolutions, number one, issue.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey?
Yes, resolution awards to A, engineers' office, Rick?
Yes, uh, A is an award to Mahoning Market Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project to BG Trucking and Construction, Inc. in the amount of three million seven hundred twenty-three thousand one hundred four dollars fifty cents. This is non-general, low bid, and ninety-five percent ODOT funds.
Thank you.
Motion for the approval of number two, resolution of awards, A.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey?
Yes, resolutions, A through B, letter A, O and B, chat.
Good morning. This is a resolution authorizing the contribution of three hundred and thirty-four thousand in total, of which two hundred forty-four will be developed in ninety for the sanitary engineers to operate in the Ohio State University Extension.
Thank you. And engineers, Rick?
Yes, B is a resolution approving the agreement with Manic Smith Group Incorporated for the construction and administration related to the Market Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. That's in the amount of three hundred fifty thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars. That's non-general.
Very good. Thank you. Branch management, Adam?
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving the second amendment of the following agency funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. And at no changing amount of six thousand dollars to, uh, change the scope of the contract from internship to the marketing side where they buy.
Thank you. And letter V, Sheriff?
Good morning, Commissioners. D is a resolution approving the First Amendment with the following for uniform allowances to include additional cooperative purchasing and a one percent discount. Blue line, LTV, and red diamond uniform and police supply.
Thank you.
Motion?
Motion for the approval of number three resolutions, A through B.
Second. Roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati?
Yes.
Commissioner Chaffey?
Yes, for the good of the order, the mic for the officials of the department has liked to call back. Anyone on the screen?
I guess I will.
Oh.
Um, since we, I didn't say anything originally with Norlyn. Norlyn, appreciate all you've done. I'm glad working with you and have a dedication and heart. I mean, and I'm glad that Mr. Scarsella continues to work with you. And I know that's for the best.
Thank you.
Uh, this Sunday is Lane of the Roses. It represents a hundred and three Vietnam veteran heroes on the wall. It's across from Doubletree. Um, they all had their roots here in Mahoning County. Uh, being that I work downtown, many days I'll walk there. I'll stare at the names. I'll salute. And as I walk away, I'll say, why? We have five-star trade now. We have five-star tourism. And YSU just had a trade delegation from Vietnam. As I walk away and I'm thinking, why? Fifty years later now, three hundred thousand have died from Agent Orange and continue to die. If you've ever been in the wall in Washington from combat, there's fifty-eight thousand. But look at the scope. Three hundred thousand to date have died from Agent Orange. It's important to remember those on the wall that gave up, died way beyond their time to see their roots grow and be part of fulfilling their dreams. That's about all I have to say about that.
Did you, you served? How was your, uh, service?
I was there one of the worst times, although all the times were worse. During the Tet Offensive, when they overran the country, my base was one of them. I'm a lucky one. I was first logistical command, and our symbol was a soldier in our palm. That everything they needed, we gave to them. And I got kind of confused my last three or four months. And I'd go out in a Jeep and pick up secret messages from the North Koreans, which were, or, uh, South Koreans, let me say that again, that were known for their fierce fighting. So for that, I got the Bronze Star. And, uh, I competed and was soldier of the month twice out of, uh, two thousand. So it's almost like you're back and you have, like, survivor guilt now, that here I am. You've given me an opportunity, and a lot never had that opportunity. So. And it's brought recognition to PTSD and to medical treatment. So one thing positive, if anything, about Vietnam is when you see a Vietnam veteran and you say, thank you for your service, it's recognizing how everyone now is treated a lot different with respect and recognition what the Vietnam veterans have brought positive to everyone. So.
They didn't have.
No, so kind of get emotional when I talk about it, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Carol, Gino?
Most. Uh, first, I want to congratulate Norlyn. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, for most time, it's like government, and you did a fine job all the way through. And we're very proud of you. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And, uh, Richard, you have good employees. Norlyn, you have a great staff. You're a lot deep, and I'm sure if you're, you just have that feeling to have in your office, so it's a big help. Jimmy? I, I have to say, probably I was part of, I mean, that era and the soldiers. Coming home. Just weren't treated with the respect. And I knew a lot of guys that I went to college with back then, that come out of Vietnam. And it was just unbelievable how that was not ever recognized as being anything at all. And that was a sad feeling because of that war. A lot of elements came with that war, whether it's PTSD or Agent Orange. I know a friend of mine had, yeah. I mean, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that, that when we would use to go see, like, peel. Everything peeled, skin, everything. I mean, it was horrible. And I'm hoping that our children and our grandchildren do not ever have to see that ever again. Because, you know, we got the best country in the world, but we need to respect the veterans that have left for us, that are alive and those that are the best for us. And, um, it's a big deal. And I go every year, and it's cold as hell. I don't know why. I've stayed for, go down there for that. It's like zero. But you know what? It's touching because I look at the families that are there, how they're dwindling. You see that?
Yes.
I mean, Tommy Stanko, he has his brother and their families. And, and Ryan's uncle, some of those things. But I mean, you see, um, you see the families that I know from the West Side who were there that lost a brother or a son. And they're all getting older. I mean, so are we. It's more our age group, it's in the apartment. Those family members of your age, and I think that's just sad because I don't think people respect that to the point where they would go down there and actually be there for at least an hour. You know, let's one out, you know, to expect people would help keep it free. Anyway, um, hopefully, like I said, with God's will, we'll stay peaceful, not have to have our children there and that or our grandchildren. Anyway, thank you. And thank all of our military people that worked for Mahoning County, all the service they gave, whether it's in Vietnam or anywhere else. We appreciate that.
Gino?
First of all, Norlyn, like I said, I haven't been here that long, but I've heard a lot of, a lot of stuff about the COVID years. No one ever said a bad thing else there. Exactly. A reporter thought you had to be on the team to continue the great service. That, that's, that speaks volumes. And I hope this, this sounded like almost like I'd gone, well, you're not going anywhere. This was just the recognition. I don't think you're retiring. I don't like you. Because I don't think we're done with you.
Okay.
But thank you for the fifth year of the service.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Absolutely. Jimmy, uh, I never served in the military. I have the utmost.
Absolutely. Jimmy, uh, I never served in the military. I have the utmost respect for veterans. I mean, with the county you've done before I got here with the veterans, I think they're, I think you guys did a great job, like, you do the center, build up, whatever that. Um, Vietnam was ugly. The way you came back was ugly, but I think everybody that went through that set up for, for the guys coming back from Gulf War, and, and, and I can't thank you enough. It's, it's funny, I was telling Anthony and Carol, I was walking in, just walking in from the west this morning, God would come for me, and it was, it was, he says, hey, he says, I'm a Vietnam veteran. He goes, I'm thinking about killing myself, because I'm not gonna get my benefits for another month. I says, what, what do you need? He goes, I just need a needle. And I, uh, I would like to just take it and, you know, take it home, give it away. I helped him out. I said, please get lunch. I gave him my card. And I get, I get disgusting, disgusting, when I see how we treat certain people that come to this country, and what we've done with our veterans. You deserve it. If we wouldn't be able to sit up here like this, none of us would be able to be here if it wasn't for our veterans. And, uh, yeah, we have to do whatever we can for that every day. And again, I thank you. I applaud you, and God bless you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you know? And, and I agree. First and foremost, I'd like to tell, uh, say to Mr. Scarsella, thank you, Richard, for putting politics aside and doing the right thing and leaving an experienced person in that office to continue to help the residents of this community. And Norlin, you helped me years back. I ran into an issue where I was trying to get all my real estate changed and all that stuff, and, uh, I wasn't making any headways anywhere, and I called Norlin. It was done in three days. Three days, she had everything for me, and that was the reputation and legacy that she has, that she continues, uh, to lead in this community. Because when somebody calls the county, they, they want to see a result, or at least a phone call back saying, I can or I cannot help you. Norlin, you've always done that. And I'm so glad that you're still in that office and you're helping. Thank you, Richard, for, for keeping her. Uh, Jimmy, I, what can I say? You told me some stories about your career in the military and what you saw, and your shoes were soaking wet, and your feet, and everything you went through in those jungles. That's unbelievable, but I do have one story I'd like to share. My mom always told me this. We had a neighbor that lived down the street. Uh, when I was a very young boy, his name was Ed Horn, and my mom told me Ed Horn used to play ball with me in the front yard. He'd come down the street and throw me the football or whatever it was. I, I don't really remember that, okay, but she does. And he got drafted to go to Vietnam, and, um, he wasn't there two weeks. He came home in a body bag. So, I just, you know, it, it is emotional, and it's just like, I was a dumb kid, five, six years old, don't even remember it, really. And he's been dead that long, like you say, when you stand in front of that stone, and all that time was extinguished from them having a family, having, you know, marriage, and having kids and working. It, it's, it's frightening, so I, I appreciate you bringing that up, and we look forward to, uh, going to that ceremony. So, thank you. Okay, Nancy, our next meeting?
Next Thursday, right here.
Okay. Motion?
Motion for your.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner De Fabio?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedy Agati? Commissioner Travis Canty?
Yes, thank you, everyone.